I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, any adjustments to the agenda?
None, Madam Chair.
Moving on to Section 3, to review and approve meeting minutes. The first is for Tuesday, January 16th, and it was an airport special meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the airport special meeting, Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, with the corrections I already gave.
All right. Shelley's motion, Donnie's seconds. Any comments, further questions? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next is a meeting for regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, January 22nd, 2018.
Make a motion to accept the minutes with any errors, corrections, which I've given, for the Rangeley Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, January 22nd.
Second.
Shelley's motion, Donnie's seconds. Are there any further suggested corrections or comments from the board? All those in favor? Next is a Selectmen and Budget Committee meeting for Monday, January 29th, 2018.
Make a motion to accept the Rangeley Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee meeting on Monday, January 29th, 2018, as presented with any errors or corrections.
Shelley's motion, Donnie's seconds. Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Moving on to Section 4, any public to speak on a non-agenda item? Yeah, Mark.
Go ahead. You go first.
Go ahead, Laura.
I wanted to speak on behalf of Rangeley Health and Wellness. I'm assuming this is the appropriate time to do that?
Absolutely. Yeah, if they're not on our agenda, absolutely.
Okay. Several times since the '90s, the Rangeley Health and Wellness has had a community visioning event where we've invited the community as a whole to come in and we've really addressed or came to understand what the community's interests or visions were for the upcoming years. And we've compiled those results and given them to the appropriate people. And some of the things that have come out of that were like the school nurse, increased daycare, all the social programs, and we've worked with the other organizations in town. So we've decided we're going to do that again this year. We're going to be having that on March 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 in the school. And I just wanted to invite you, want to get your input and thought it might be a good way for you to hear the community's ideas for vision. And I've got a flyer that I'll give to Tricia that she can give to all of you.
Perfect. That's great. We can put it on the website and...
What time is that?
6:00 to 8:00.
This is at the school. Is it going to be in the gym or in the multi-...
Gym, actually.
Yeah, that's what I thought last time.
Last time we had about 100 people, so... Assuming the construction has not been over that.
Exactly. Mark?
Yes, I have three quick things. The first one is, you're getting involved in the budget now for the coming year, and one thing I wanted to mention was the section on the donations. I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to look into, see if there's a way to Rangeley to cap the amount that they get asked to fund, because there seems to be some inequality. You know, some of the things, they want like 90% from Rangeley and, you know, only 10% from the surrounding plantations and unorganized towns. And I thought there's two ways you might want to explore, and one would be to match the combined contribution of the three plantations and the unorganized towns, or use the cost-share formula that we used for the fire department and transfer station, and we used to use it for the rescue as well before NOSTA took over. And then, item number two would be to expand the application of the cost-share formula to include the airport, because during the discussions, you know, there were voiced and written support from all the plantations, and even one of the county commissioners came and spoke on it. So I'm thinking this level of support should probably translate into willingness to pay the share that they benefit from it as well. And then, the third and final item was during the rollout of that budget the other evening, there was an item in there to create a new capital reserve account for the airport to fund a parallel taxiway. And I was just wondering to see when back, I think it may have, I'm not sure on this part of it, but back, I think it was your first meeting in September, the airport consultant and the airport manager encouraged you to vote to move ahead with the environmental assessment, and you did. And then they asked that you include the area for landslide improvements and the parallel taxiway, not that it was needed now, but that it was an efficiency thing, because while they were doing the environmental assessment, they could do that at no more cost to the town of Rangeley, and then if they ever needed it in the future, it would be done. And then, so I was just looking for an explanation from you folks to explain how, you know, a multimillion-dollar project like that goes from an assessment status to having a capital reserve account without any discussion, you know, with the town. And I don't know if you know that verbatim, and if you don't, you know, maybe you could just put it on your next meeting's agenda and explain it then, but, you know, it just made me curious of how that process works. And I jotted these things down just so you wouldn't have to take too many notes, and we're going to just give them to you.
Thank you. Well, the presentation, the presentation of the budget was our initial exposure to what is being requested. And one, so that hasn't even been discussed, the, you know, the new airport reserve account or any other reserve accounts. We did ask at our last meeting that we be provided with a current list of reserve accounts and their balances, because one of the questions that was asked was if all of the capital expenditure requests were monies expected to be raised, or if some of that was coming out of reserve accounts. And so, at, yeah, so basically that last meeting was just for information gathering purposes only. And, and, yeah, not for scrutiny or whatnot. That comes as we go through the budget. So, we'll, yeah, we'll, I'm sure be asking that question more regarding, you know, they all have to, you know, legitimize their requests for reserve dollars, and so I don't see why we treat this any differently.
Thank you.
Any other public present to speak on a non-agenda item? Moving ahead to Section 5, Boards and Committees. Are there any boards or committees present that would like to share information? Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
I don't need to stand up. This is for the Rangeley Region Economic Opportunity Council Committee. First of all, I wanted to give an update, although I noticed in the agenda you said SBA update at the end. Is that for the small business meeting?
Yeah, there's a picture of her.
Well, last Wednesday, we had a meeting, actually standing room only. There were 26 people that signed up to attend that meeting, and there were representatives from Senator King's office, from Poliquin's office, as well as people here to learn about what options they have in starting a new business or growing their business. I think it was very valuable for everyone. Ben Tucker from King's off, Senator King's office even said, "Look, you guys really don't understand what you've got here. There's an incredible amount of resources in this room, so please ask all the questions you can." And so hopefully we've got some good businesses generated out of that and expanding businesses. So I don't know if Dave wanted, Dave was there, if he had anything further to add.
I made some good connections with some people that I didn't know were around and some information that I didn't know was available.
Excellent.
And then the other thing on that same day was the county-wide Franklin County Pod End Initiative was presented by Brian Lippold from Sewell Consulting, presented in Farmington. There were, I think, over 100 people at that presentation. And that presentation, or actually the presentation and the actual report is available on the Greater Franklin Development Council's website. It's about this big, but you can, it is broken out by town as well. Our hope is, our plan is to get a countywide group together to really understand, to really take it to the next step. Okay, what do we do? What can, how can we as a county continue to work to make this feasible financially as well as to get broadband better throughout the county? And as well, I would like to try to get Brian up to speak to all of you, just Range Plantation, Dallas, Sandy River, and you. I don't know if you have a quarterly meeting set up with this?
We just had one. We just had one in January, and so our next one would be, you know, set up for April.
Quarterly with all the towns, you mean? You had one January of this year?
Yeah.
The one that came was two of the plantations.
We didn't get an office.
Range's plantation people.
I sent an email, so.
To David?
To Dallas Plantation.
Well, we didn't hear about it. I mean, it certainly would have gone, you know?
Yeah, so the next one, the next one will be in April.
Okay, I don't know if you would entertain doing a special meeting to have him come and speak to all of you guys, you know?
Could certainly put it out to the other plantations, see what, you know, see if that, how far out is he scheduling? Do you know, Laura?
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't have, I've just requested it from him now and don't even know if he's willing to do it, but I certainly wanted to find out if you guys are willing to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, and, you know, facilitate that through, you know, through Tim or Tricia, the Board Secretary, and, you know, at our next meeting, if he's, you know, considering that, we could kind of take a look at the schedule and make sure that doesn't conflict, you know, that we choose a time that doesn't conflict and whatnot.
Right. And then the last thing was, at the last meeting, we did make our request again for the full-time economic development manager, and I believe it's not in the budget?
It's, when we get to that section, we'll review it and, you know, just see where things are at now. It's, you know, there was a verbal request for it at our last meeting, and so it's, we'll be going over each, you know, each component. Tim's going to print off what was presented last year for when we get to that part of the budget.
You said verbal, does that mean we should be doing it in writing?
No, I mean Kate presented it, presented it to us at our last meeting, and the, and the budget had been, had been drafted and put out, so we'll be, you know, we'll be looking at each, each request as, as we proceed through our budget process.
About the budget meetings.
Yeah.
So, so when you go through the budget, is it in the budget and you go through and decide whether you're keeping it in the budget or eliminating it from the budget?
Either or. Either or.
Okay, because I think Kate didn't think it got in there at all.
It's, it's not, it's not, it's not in the budget that was supplied to, to the Board of Selectmen. However, the information will be provided to us at our, probably our first budget meeting. We may not be discussing that at the first budget meeting, but it will be provided to us and we'll look into it.
Okay, so that's how that works. Thank you.
Okay.
Usually each department gives like a scenario, so basically we listen, we do the overall, then we listen to the components from each section, and then if we have questions, we ask them then, and then the final ones at like the next meeting or...
Yeah, so at this point, it was just the initial presentation from department heads, and like Shelley said, we'll, we have our very first budget meeting next, you know, a week from today, and we'll come up with like a plan, you know, a plan of review to go through it and, you know, go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other boards and committees present who wish to share information or updates? Moving on to number six, that's the consent items, and the first is a two-signature banking authorization form that Franklin Savings Bank needs for their records and to process any checks that are written out of town accounts. Do you have questions, Shelley?
I do. So this is a letter that we're signing with our names, right? So on the first paragraph, it says the following are account numbers for, this should be our checking accounts, I'm assuming, not out.
Yeah.
And then probably that should be a colon, because then you're listing them after. And then it says, the next paragraphs, please, I think it should be add, A-D-D, the following authorized signers to all the deposit accounts listed above, again, colon, and then, so... I would make a motion to accept the letter as presented with the following corrections just given.
Shelley's motion, and Donnie's seconds.
Any other comments from the board?
Just one.
Yes.
I thought we, at that last meeting, we figured there was seven accounts. Want to? When we, when we went through everything, did they say it was going to be seven? And I didn't bring my last papers, but maybe I'm wrong, but I thought there was going to be seven.
Is it seven or eight? Because cemetery.
Actually, it's in the minutes of the last...
Oh, yes. I could be wrong, but I thought there was seven.
Looks like six.
Okay, all right. Maybe they combined another one with something else, so maybe six.
I think, I thought they said another one, too. But maybe the minutes corrected that.
I'll have to, have to present a revised letter if that's the case.
Yeah, so what do you want for my thing? My memo?
We just accepted the minutes with the six.
Yep.
Well, I could be wrong, but I thought there was.
You know...
So...
Just disregard what I just said, I guess.
Okay, so we did, we did prove the minutes with six lists identified and six are listed, so I think we're safe to move forward with your motion. Donnie's second, noting the corrections that need to be made. Okay. Thank you, Jim. You know, it's always good to double-check and bring things up. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Moving on to a memo from Tricia regarding the purchase of, the town's purchased a property off, from the Mortons off the Winter Road. So it looks like we need a motion from the Board of Selectmen to write off the second half of property taxes in the amount of $110,086, since we own the property during the second installment period.
Make a motion to wipe off the second half of the taxes for this property that we are purchasing from the Mortons off the Winter Road in the amount of $110,000...
I'm sorry, geez, I'm flustered.
$110,086.
All right. Shelley's motion and Jim's seconds.
Can you make sure they write amounts on there?
I think we paid too much.
Oh, my word. It's Monday.
All right. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? And also presented by Tricia is a suggested draft application for the, to have it be a blanket event permit application. This is geared towards the park only, Tricia?
That's for all of them.
All of them, okay.
Except vendor, that's obvious, except for one, because it's...
Exactly. All right.
Do we do three drafts?
What's in it?
We don't do three drafts, right?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a policy, so it's just...
Is this just information for us, or...
I think so. I mean, it's, you know...
So the next time somebody comes through with whatever, this is what, the way you're going to go?
If you approve it.
But you've got right now is a draft, right?
This is just a draft, yeah. Any changes, any suggestions, any comments, or... It's trying to combine, we have like four or five different...
Can you say you took?
No.
You took the...
I took outdoor festival parade, the park, and the parking parade. Makes sense.
Make a motion to accept the new created event permit application that will replace the outdoor festival permit, the parade permit, the park permit, the park parade combo permit.
Nice, nice job, Tricia.
Second.
Shelley's motion, Jim's seconds. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Nice job, Tricia.
Nice job.
And next we have a parade permit application for the cystic fibrosis snowmobile ride at Bald Mountain Camps. The name of the event is Cystic Fibrosis World Record Ride, and boy, they really cut this close. These permits are supposed to be received no more than 30 days before the event, and the date of this event is February 17th. We really do appreciate those organizations that submit.
I will say that the person that submitted did apologize and, and, yeah, sorry.
All right, so we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the cystic fibrosis ride at Bald Mountain Camps on February 17th, 2018, starting at 11:00 a.m. and ending at 5:30.
Donnie's motion?
Second.
And Dave's seconds? So where this isn't happening on town property, do we not need these, you know, do we need any of these department reviews and comments?
Well, this, this can be in the park.
Okay.
They're just going to ride, they're going to ride, basically the only thing that's going to happen that is going to, the snowmobiles are going to ride on Main Street for a portion and then go into the park and back, so...
So we don't, the park...
I want to make sure that Joe's aware of it. At the time, I haven't been able to.
Says Russell Cove to Town Park.
I'm sorry, my keen awareness failure. So the park commission doesn't sign off on...
They're just riding through.
Okay.
Which snowmobiles do already without...
There's not an event happening in the park.
Not an event happening at the park, it's all just, it's a ride through.
All right, any other, yeah, Shelley?
But doesn't the police department or the highway?
Says highway, it's going to put down...
Do they, I thought they shut both sides of the traffic to let them pass all through. That's, so do they have to sign off on that?
Yes.
I'll make sure you test the materials on that.
We're aware of it, that fiber and hazard are aware, it's pretty standard.
Okay, all right, just checking to make sure that...
Traffic control.
We're good. And you're good.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous. All right. That's it for consent items. We move on to correspondence. There is none. Then on to old business, and this has to do with the Rangeley Inn and Tavern, the Historic Preservation Commission follow-up, and it basically lets us know that the Rangeley Inn and Tavern was approved for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. The nomination will then be sent on to the Chief of Registration in Washington, D.C. for consideration, and we'll be notified of the final decision when it's received. And they don't give a timeline, so we'll just stay tuned. Next in our packets is a follow-up regarding the marijuana moratorium. We had the more, the more, draft moratorium presented in our packets a couple of months ago, and we just kind of left it hanging. And so Tim touched base with Steve regarding what, actually, Donnie, I'm sorry. Donnie asked, asked a question of me that he thought perhaps the Board of Selectmen had the authority to pass a moratorium, and that was followed up with Steve, and he says, "No, it has to go to public vote." So after that was confirmed, Tim then went back and asked him what our options were for, for voting on, or having the public vote on a marijuana moratorium. And so you can see Steve's response, and so just to review that, it says, "The board may choose to schedule a special town meeting, either as an open meeting or as a secret ballot. If it's by open meeting, it can be done seven days after the select board presents the warrant. If it's by secret ballot, it will be according to the same procedure you just used for the referendum election. You can also put this on the regular town meeting warrant in June." The new law, which went into effect February 1st, which is the date that Steve wrote this to Tim, the new law, which went into effect today, requires both state and municipal licenses before any type of retail marijuana facility may open, including a retail store, production facility, testing lab, or social club. So those, those are the options. Pretty Flaherty drafted this moratorium back in 2017, and it's just been kind of something that's been, we've had on our agenda a couple of times, and looking for board feedback on how the public, how you would like the public to be able to vote on this. It's something the public has brought to, there'd first need to be a public hearing to discuss, you know, the moratorium and...
Not if we do an open town meeting.
Not if we do an open town meeting, right.
Because it's, that would be your public hearing. Everybody could speak there.
Correct.
Just you.
Thank you.
The thing is, because we're among the orders committee, and we have Farmington's marijuana ordinance, but none of this is even, it's all a moot point until the state figures out how they can even set up a business. You can't do it anywhere right now. I'm not saying we don't want to do it, I'm just saying, until the state gets it together to figure out what the rules are...
I think what our moratorium encompasses is medical marijuana, and that law has already been passed. And so you see these caregiver storefronts that, you know, there's a loophole in that, in that medical marijuana law that is in existence that allows these caregiver storefronts to, you know, pop up on Main Street.
Yeah.
And so that's the difference between our moratorium and what you see for ordinances, is that it incorporates that as well. And so what the moratorium does, you know, for, is it, it puts a, puts a hold on any action regarding medical marijuana for hundreds... for 180 days, and then it can be extended from there to allow public input, feedback to the ordinance committee to address concerns the public may have with medical marijuana storefronts as well as recreational marijuana. And so, that's, basically, that's the difference.
I don't know, I know there's a difference. I just, I don't think anybody's putting a medical marijuana place in town.
I would think, you know, I don't think this is a pressure issue. I mean, I think we could do it at a regular June meeting to vote on it then, instead of having a, you know...
Okay, so we have Jim's opinion that we could schedule, add this to something that will normally be voted on at our...
And as I said, too, I mean, till the state gets their act together and whatever. I mean, I don't think nothing's ever gonna become of this anyway till they get their act together. And who knows, they may, the government may step in, and it may be all for naught. It's all...
Yeah.
I don't think there's any sense having a special town meeting just for this.
Okay. All right, does anyone feel any differently? Okay, so, so do you need a motion for us to add this? Or do we just incorporate it in with our...
You've already had a motion for the ordinance committee to work on a mor-, not a moratorium, but a marijuana ordinance.
I don't think, no, we didn't. No, at our last meeting, it was...
No, it wasn't last meeting, it was a while ago. I'd have to look, because they've started working.
Okay.
It's not a moratorium, it's the ordinance that would come into play after the moratorium expires.
And the state figures out?
Yeah.
The state still needs to figure it out there. So, are you talking moratorium for the June?
Yes, because the ordinance committee isn't, you know...
Yeah, they haven't even...
Yeah.
We've got Farmington's to look at.
Yeah, I definitely need a motion to move forward with marijuana.
All right, so, do you need it worded in such a sense that it will be an item voted on in the selectmen's warrant? For, or how, how do you want, how do you want that?
Have you approved the language on the moratorium yet?
We have reviewed it. No, I think we reviewed it.
We reviewed it, but we never, because we said the same thing until the state gets their act together, what's the sense in it?
No, there was additional language added to the last one, again regarding medical marijuana. That's, I mean, that's what people forget, is that medical marijuana is legal. It, these, you know, these storefronts can appear, you know, anywhere.
How many of them are gonna open up up here?
I think being proactive is better than being reactive.
But it still has to go through the planning board and da-da-da-da, I mean... It's not just showing up.
You've had one that was amended in front of you. Okay, let me dig that one out.
Okay.
And then we'll just review it for next time.
I'll put it on for the next agenda and...
Okay.
That'll work.
All right.
So, we don't need a motion to move forward doing that, right? We just have that in our next package?
No, I'll just...
So, do you, so do you still need a motion now, based on Jim's recommendation for, you know, it to be added to our warrant? I mean, just given all these timetables, everything moved up, so suddenly...
Where, where we'll, I'll put it in front of you at your next meeting.
Okay.
We're still okay, because then you'll have that one, and you can approve it at the next meeting with a motion, and then we can go forward with advertising for a public hearing and all of that.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, moving on to the breakdown of consolidated bank accounts. So, what we had asked for was a list of what the combined accounts were going to look like. So, it looks like, you know, like, for instance, under cemetery, on the second page, the cemetery itself had four different bank accounts. Is that, Tricia, is that what that looks like?
I think so.
Four different bank accounts, and so, they've all been consolidated into the Town of Rangelley Cemetery Trust Bank Account.
You're talking about the cemetery ones?
Yeah, it was just, they have their own separate page on page two. And then...
A lot of those, the only thing you can spend is the interest.
Yeah. They should definitely be earning more interest now. And also disclosed was the penalty for the trust CDs, three CDs to be moved. And the penalties were minor, $3.70 for two and $4.07 for one, which Leanna mentioned will make back in interest severalfold. Any questions? And lastly, under old business, we've got correspondence from the Airport Environmental Assessment. There was a 364-page document posted for public feedback and comment. And the comment period ended January 3rd. And so, folks who chose to comment could. And there are comments coupled with response letters. But I don't know who the response letters are from. It's the first I, first we've seen, so... Yeah, so, it's each, each letter or comment or email received a response, but it doesn't say who it's from or, or, you know, which entity, if it's FAA or otherwise, or who wrote the response. So, that was, I just thought it was strange. Yes.
So, does anyone know who responds?
No.
Who?
Hmm? Does anyone know who responded?
It was, I received a response back to my letter, and I'm just looking to see if I can find it.
Just ask Rebecca tomorrow and find out.
Is it from a newsletter?
Yeah.
Is it an email, all depending on how they received them? I'm just curious.
Well, you got an email.
I just got an email.
You just got an email? Did you send it as an email format?
Yeah.
All right, just follow up with Rebecca. All right, moving on to new business. And we've got a donation request from the Aquasic ATV Club for $2,000 for trail repairs. And is this, is this to put on our, is this to add to the other?
I received it, so I added it to the packets, not knowing that should happen with it.
And what was the deadline for other nonprofits was January 3rd?
But they were, one that wasn't notified of it because they've never asked before, so I didn't know how you wanted to handle it.
Okay. I think they were. They have been on the donation request list before.
Not since I have been mailing out a letter and an application. I did not have them on a previous last couple of years, so I didn't send them anything.
Okay.
Which is probably handled everybody else from us. And we implemented the application. We decided to mail it to the previous year's requests, and that's the base I was going off of when I mailed the applications.
I would move that we do like the rest of the donation, people that ask for donations, they write a petition, a letter, and we put them on the agenda under the donation lines.
Was there a petition?
It's under, it's under $5,000.
Oh, that's right. Thoughts?
Well, just to get on there, we'll just look town side, I guess. I don't know what else. I mean, it's not their fault, because they apparently were not...
Sure.
Are they, are they in existence?
Huh?
Are they in existence?
They have meetings, they did last year, but...
Because remember last time, I'm trying to go back and...
No, something, I think you're right. I think there was a question of whether...
Because what, before, it was the Rangelley ATV Club, and then they changed to the Aquasic.
No, they didn't change.
But did they, they didn't combine...
We disbanded, the Camp Two Trail Riders on a Rangelley, this is a total supper group, total supper organization.
I think, what's his name, the head of it, isn't he? Clyde. Yeah, Clyde.
Ferguson, wasn't it?
Yeah. Because I know they had, they had a meeting last year, because I remember seeing them all down there.
They do rides, they do trail cleaning over in...
Trail cleaning over in Fort River last fall, I think, sometime.
Any other, I'll go through board comments first. Any other board comments? Mark?
Back to that, under the public to speak there about this donation line. In hopes that at your next meeting, you'll discuss that proposal of capping Rangelley's share to the total that gets requested from the other three plantations.
I don't think we can do that, because it's by petition. We don't have any say.
I thought you said it wasn't by petition, it was just a...
All the other, all the other donations are by petition.
If they're, if we require a petition for $5,000 or more.
Okay.
So, if they're the little piddly ones that come in for $700 or $800, we don't require them to go get, to fill out the petition.
So, you know the answer to that part of it then, but what about applying the cost-sharing formula?
They do, the library applies the formula.
No, I mean, like this ATV club or something like that, because I think that these donations cause tax inequality. You know, as I mentioned earlier, they ask Rangelley for the lion's share, either because they think people don't know how to say no, or they think Rangelley people don't care how high their taxes get. I don't really know the reason. But it seems like when you review all those things and look at what gets requested from the plantation and what gets requested from the Town of Rangelley, there's only a few instances where it's fairly equal.
Right.
And, you know, like Leanna with the health center, right from the get-go, she charged everybody, everybody the same amount. And, you know, there's never been an issue with that. But many of these other ones, you know, they're, to me, they're way out of balance.
Okay, thank you.
Right, too.
Yes.
I mean, here is a, you know, this ATV club, basically, is in Rangelley Plantation. You know, so, I mean, it's another thing, like with the cross-country scheme, the Town of Rangelley donates money, it's not even in our town. And here's another, be another example. I mean, basically, the whole trail is in Rangelley Plantation or Laura, so...
Can't get here from there.
Well, no.
Literally, but...
Do you know that they didn't request from Rangelley Plantation?
Well, that's something we probably have to check into, if they didn't, but...
I asked, did you know, they may have, they may have asked for more from Rangelley Plantation?
No, it's one voice at a time, okay? One voice at a time. Yeah, Rangelley Town, Rangelley Plantation's town meeting is next month. And I would imagine they have the warrant out by now for taxpayers to view on what you guys are voting on. And they include donation requests in that warrant.
If you look at the application on page two, it asks on the application, what donations and what amounts to asking from other communities. So, they filled out an application...
That's why, that's why we're having this discussion. They wanted us to mail an application, too, so it came in active effect.
Oh, so they actually have an application, they just handed a request.
Right.
So, we have a couple of board members that think that, that this should just be added to the donation request list.
Are these individualists here, or are they lumped together under five? I think this request would just be voted on individually, or...
A secret ballot it would.
Yeah, you can check the other number.
I think we should have just put it before the voters, or come to decide.
Yeah, Shelley?
Should we get them started in the rotations, so they actually start filling out the application?
They absolutely will.
So, go, but I mean, I'd still, to make them do it, say, you know, even though your application is late, we're gonna put it in front of the Budget Committee and the Selectmen to see, yeah.
Okay, because I...
Do they have a copy of the original application?
Somebody that doesn't, they just nailed that up.
I was just saying, maybe send them one and have them send it back, even though we're probably gonna do it.
Yeah, because, and please...
But at least they will know what they're asking from everybody else.
Yeah, could, yeah, I, I think we should refuse it, but, you know, everyone else, all the other donation requests are very comprehensive, and they spend a lot of time providing the right info, but I would just, if you could just make it clear, you know, to them that... Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Aquasic ATV Club request to be put on the town warrant for $2,000.
Second.
Dave's motion and Donnie's seconds.
Madam Chairman?
Uh, yes, Joe?
Would you, would you like to have them fill out the application now?
And then she would?
Yeah, just so we have it on...
So, we have it on file, even though it's late?
Yes.
Would you like to have them do that?
Okay.
Shelley?
So, you're making a motion to add it to the warrant, not to put it within the budget process? So, we see what their application is, to see where else they're applying and how much they're looking for, for the whole project that they're looking to do?
We're gonna put this on the warrant to be voted on by the taxpayers, and we're just gonna ask them to fill out an application, so we have it on file. Well...
Yes, Joe?
I mean, I think they ought to go through the process like all the, all the rest of them, you know? I think we can't stop that, but, you know, there's no doubt, I think we need to see more information about where the trails are, where else they're asking for funding and whatever. And if the voters want to go along with it, then so be it, but, you know...
So, if they fill the application out, then we'll have that?
Yeah. And then we can, if they don't fill it out very well, then we can just say we're not gonna approve it, right?
Not this year. I mean, we're voting to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, that, it's, there's no going back. You know, then it's turned over to the voters to say yea or nay. All right, so we have Dave's motion, Donnie's seconds. Any other clarifying questions?
This is a completely non, a voluntary group, and a lot of them are from out of state. And this, a lot of them stock in Aquasic, can use this, shop at the stores in Aquasic, can use Aquasic Village and stay here up in Rangelley. So, I think this is just part of the economics of Rangelley to help them a little bit. My two cents.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor? And all those opposed? Three in favor, two opposed. Next, we've got RGY's Public Safety Budget Proposal. And Dave has written a letter. And it's something Dave brought to our attention last year, that he felt that RGY serves a local emergency broadcast in an emergency broadcast capability service to the Town of Rangelley. And he's laid out a nice letter here, and... And I think this is something we would need to defer to Tim as our public safety director, you know, and he works in coordination with Franklin County and whatnot, and they've got, they've got that.
They have an, they have an entire emergency system already set up. They do drills all the time. They, they do that through Tim Harding, Tim Hardy? Tim Hardy out of Farmington, who is the Franklin County Emergency Director. And there was Somerset, so it's not just the town, it's like Franklin and Somerset County together, that I know that works on the aspect for the law enforcement part. And Tim said he does something on his part, too.
Yeah, he does.
So they do drills for like, like what happens with school, what happens, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's, and this is in a capability that can enhance all those efforts. It's something that is done at the federal or state level because there are broadcast systems in place. There are very few community radio stations that exist. We're out here in a remote part of the state. We have a community station. We can enhance all our emergency services by utilizing it the same way the feds and the state does the emergency alert system. So I would leave it up to the safety personnel, the emergency department, police and so forth, for them to recognize the value of this sort of service that can be provided. If there's a major accident, a major fire, a hostage situation, a school evacuation, that's, we have to have that information broadcast in a timely fashion to the entire public and dispel all sorts of panic and provide information for people to know what to do or what not to do. So it's a huge capability that, that I think, I would leave it up to the public safety departments to recognize and take advantage of.
So the designation that you've indicated, Dave, of seventy-five hundred, is, that's a proportion, that's a proportionate share of what you're asking for a donation request? Or is that the full amount that the radio station has submitted for the public to vote on?
No, this is two separate, completely separate things. This is just strictly essential services to public safety budget. The donation is separate.
Okay. All right, so...
The donation is basically on the merits that has always been proposed, that the radio station is a great economic asset to the town and a great communication asset. It's coupled to the library, the radio station is a non-educational nonprofit, and its mission is to disseminate information and education like the library. So we've always pursued that aim when we pressed money from the time we passed. But now that we've, we've finally been qualified this past year, about the time I was here last time, the federal emergency alert system now recognizes that we, RGY, is in the system. Took us a long time to get that designation because we were told picking up two signals. We need to have two signals received to be part of that network. And we have a new antenna on top of the theater that picks up the second one finally. So we finally have that designation. And so that would be appropriate now to take advantage of that capability and enhance it with a local essential service that can benefit the region in other ways. So this is the first time that we've requested, that we felt we qualified for essential services in a normal way. So we were too late last year when we pursued this line.
Yeah.
And the advice was to get organized and get it, get it issued.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, any, you know, our budget process isn't something we make up locally. It is, you know, we have to follow state statute, and they've got, you know, guidelines for essential services. And so we'll defer this to Tim as our public safety officer and have him research this day. Thank you so, thank you very much, took a lot of time.
Thank you.
Shelley?
How far do you reach out? Because I know at one point it was hard for you to get the station in certain, like near downtown.
Yeah, we overlooked our signal string last year. And, yeah, we have the only city raid signal in the major region. There's no other radio station that covers Rangelley way, as it does now.
And how often do you have coverage in there? So if there was a case of emergency, how does that work? Like, do you have someone in there twenty-four hours? Is there?
Well, that's something to be, to be, to work out with the public safety people. I mean, in the note, I said that we have twenty-four, we have full access twenty-four seven to the studio. And basically, I don't, I stay out of the studio. But from what I understand, if someone goes in the studio, presses a button, takes a mic, they are on the air, okay? So whatever the protocol, when you say there's already a system in place, those people know how to talk, the emergency talk on the air, and they basically take over the studio. And when you need a command post or whatever, an emergency situation arises. So, yeah, it's twenty-four seven access. There's not someone in there twenty-four seven that's going to do it. But I think it's a pretty simple matter for the people that do know the studio to show the emergency people, this is the box you press, here's the mic you call, that's all you have to do.
Any other questions for Dave? Moving on.
So just a follow-up. Should I stay in touch with town manager? Or should I wait here, or what? I mean, I...
With him not being here, he's sick. He would be a point of contact. So feel free to reach out and he'll let you know what the next steps are. Okay? Thank you, Dave. Next, we have a request from the co-enforcement officer regarding a deemed dangerous building at thirty-five Hotel Road. And he's got a specific motion that would need to be made in order for this to be designated a dangerous building.
Madam Chair, I move we vote to delegate the authority vested in the municipal officers pursuant to Title thirty dash A MRS A subsection three, one oh six dash B, Municipal Authority Management Abandoning Properties and Title seventeen MSRA subsection two five, two eight five one dash two eight five nine, Dangerous Building to the co-enforcement officer. This delegation includes the authority to conduct site inspections, issue corrective orders, and enter property to regulate care, maintenance, and security of property determined to be abandoned.
Donnie's motion.
Second.
Shelley's seconds.
Yes, sir. I know this gentleman, I know he's been on hard times, he's homeless. I think the property, last time I knew, he owed back taxes, and the bank was going to take it. So I guess, if we do this, then we make the bank responsible for the cleanup or whatever? Because they'll probably be the owner of the property, right?
Yeah, that will, they'll have, it'll go into foreclosure, and then they'll have a subsequent auction.
And then whoever buys it will have to clean it up.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Moving on to section ten, Department Head Updates.
Oh, wait, Dan.
And the first is from the co-enforcement officer with his, what he said going on from January eighteenth to thirty-first. And obviously, he worked on the presentation of this dangerous building. This component is a large part. Next is Joe Roach's update. Looks like everything pretty standard, Joe.
Yeah, for the most part.
Flowing? Oh, Joe, go ahead with the updates, I'm sorry. I didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, he was kind of like, oh, and I was like, oh, you're just...
Yeah, things are pretty standard, snowing, snow and ice control, snow removal, snow making. We're moving in one part of town and making it in the other part of town, the frequent plan. One thing I do want to bring up is this summer, the DOT is going to be doing some paving work on their portion of Pleasant Street. So when you come around the corner, Route four, take the right, they're going to do what's called a mill and fill on that section, and they're going to take another right towards Strat, and they're going to shim an overlay all the way up to somewhere in the neighborhood of the logging museum, somewhere up there. And they're also going to put in a four-foot shoulder on the south side of the road so the people from Depot Street can have a little bit safer place to travel. So that's actually coming through. That is a result of the meeting that Tim and I had with DOT and Paul and Spring last summer. This project is moving fast for DOT. DOT came up and met with Keith and I last week just to answer some of our questions, because this is moving a lot faster than most DOT things do. And I think it's because it's the private-public partnership. They've got Paul and Springs as a partner, so got a little money involved there. So anyway, that's happening. Keith and I have met with them, and our portion of that project is to adjust the sewer manholes. We're responsible for that work. And in talking with them, I think it makes the most sense for the town to enter into the agreement with DOT to allow them to bid that for us. So the estimate that it looks like we announced, about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars to have those adjusted. When the bids come back, we have a forty-eight hour opt-out period. So the town, you can look at those, we can look at those bids and say, yeah, you know what, we could, there's a better way, or we're more comfortable doing it differently. So anyways, I just wanted you to know, we're going in that direction. You'll have more hard and fast numbers as we get into the budget season. We may have to look at that. And cross-training, we have, currently have two vacancies in the highway. And I'd like to think that you wouldn't see the difference on the street with the level of service, and that's because of cross-training operations. We have people in different job functions filling in here and there. That is a stopgap, that's a temporary thing. We should be doing that as normal operations, but we are trying to fill those positions. We've had, I guess, one application come in. Tracy and I are talking about ways to kind of throw that net back out there and see if there's some people interested. This is a really great place to work. So we're trying to do that, get those jobs filled. Speaking of that, you probably have heard by now that I have decided to move on. Very difficult decision for me, I love it here, I love working here. But I have decided to move on. So Tim had asked if I would put it before you to see if you would accept that resignation. He hasn't been writing, I gave it to him, I gave him on his notice.
No.
No. No.
Careful what you say, George.
Yeah. So before I forget, I wanted to put that out there. That would be the first part of it, and then the second part, if you weren't interested in filling that position, which I would recommend.
All right, looking for a motion.
I don't see it.
No. I guess I'll move that we accept Joe's resignation with regrets and thank you for your service, and best of luck.
Damn.
Jim's motion to accept, and Donnie's second. All those in favor? Got him. And then we need a motion to allow the town manager to move forward with filling that position.
So moved.
Donnie's motion, do I have a second? Shelley's seconds. And all those in favor? Not unanimous. All right.
Would you like me to do the police department?
Yeah, continue on.
Okay, looks like a hundred and fifty-one toll calls, two convictions, one for O E Y, one for assault in the police department. And I spoke to the chief this morning, I think he also has one application that's committed, he's also trying to fill an officer vacancy. Fire department report here. Tim outlining his normal monthly training, which is very important in fire service. Equipment checks, truck checks. Members of the color guard attended firefighter Howard Lewis's funeral in the army, to pay their respects. They responded to a snowmobile accident on Voiceout Road, snowmobile trailer fire at the airport, snowmobile show, vehicle accident on one twenty-one in the afternoon, and medical assist on one twenty-five in evening on Miguelup Road. And that's what I have for Department Head.
All right. And tucked in the back, we've got a resignation submitted by Keith Deschambault from the Budget Committee. So that is an elected position, so... How do we handle that, Tricia? I mean, is that something we can accept a resignation for? Or does, I mean, I...
Well, you can accept his resignation because the board is allowed to fill the positions if they're not filled at election time.
Okay, that's true.
They're allowed to appoint.
Yeah, that's true, okay. So do I have a motion to accept Keith Deschambault's?
I make a motion with Joe Keith Deschambault's letter of resignation for the budget.
Donnie's motion. And Shelley's seconds. Any questions or comments? I could thank Keith for his time he devoted to the Budget Committee. It's much appreciated. And all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next is a summary of airport maintenance, annual airport maintenance costs. And this has been brought up a few times over the past, past, you know, three or four months, is, you know, folks asking for a true reflection as to how much the airport costs, because we've got what's been submitted budget, you know, what Rebecca submitted in our regular budget as the airport manager. But then the Highway Department absorbs the costs for maintenance, both man-hours and equipment for maintaining it. So it looks like it's a total of additional thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars in maintenance costs. And, you know, so what was discussed previously at our meetings is, you know, to have the, regarding the whole shared cost thing, we've had plantation residents come and speak in support of the airport and what's going on. And so we can, you know, now show what, you know, as the airport currently, in its current state, what it costs to maintain every year and...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, on the summer part, that's not correct. I mean, when you put it out to bid, what was it? It was four thousand dollars. So you haven't got nothing there about what it's costing you for your... I know last year the town did it, but you have no cost there of what it costs for the tractor. I mean, you've got labor and you've got equipment. I mean, you only got down for equipment, four hundred and eighty dollars for fuel. But you're not reflecting what that per hour is for that mowing machine up there, right?
No, because we did put that out, contracted that before.
Right, last year we didn't.
That's right.
But still, you've got, you've got, that labor cost is going to be put on the sewer account because it's their tractor and their bush hog and their man-hours. man-hours that's over there doing it. So, I mean, that's a low, that's not a correct figure on that. And I would almost guess on the plowing, you know, that's not a true reflection, reflection of what total time it costs up there for the Highway Department either.
These are estimating, these are estimated numbers. Uh, we do not track it that closely, uh, in my experience. You could, you create a lot of work trying to track your work, in my experience. Uh, it may be something to look forward, that you want, we want to look more closely at. These are estimates. Um, and fuel and preventive maintenance and the equipment line on, on mowing, you know, includes some blades and some, some regular maintenance type of stuff. But, uh, there is no hourly rate built in there. You're exactly right. I didn't, I didn't charge it that way, like a contractor would. We own the equipment.
Well, I know Everett, when he was a foreman, every time a piece of equipment went up there, and whatever, he wrote down how many hours, what vehicle was there, what piece of equipment was there, so you had a true cost of what. And I, you know, that isn't that hard to do. I mean, if you go up there, you know, you take your ten minutes to write down, figure out how long everybody's been up there. But I'm just saying, to get a true cost, this is a low cost right here. This is, this is not a true, you know, estimate. It's far more than this, you know? So, I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna tell, tell something, this, you know, we ought to try to get a, a true cost, not a guess, so that we can put up. Because, you know, as I've said all along with this airport, you know, they keep saying this is a great thing and this and that. But I want to look at the true cost, so that, you know, when, when it comes back, I, you know, I can say, "Wow, it did, it cost this amount of money," not just say, "Oh, well, it's not that much cost to the taxpayers." Well, it is quite a cost up there, so I'm just putting that out there, that's all. But I think whoever works up there should write down their hours, what piece of equipment's there, whatever. Then you can get a true cost of what it reflects the plow, it, mow it, and maintain it.
Yeah. If we're, if we're gonna ask the plantation to kick in money, I guarantee you, they're gonna wanna know where every nickel went. Um, so that's, that's our biggest problem here, is, is getting it so the plantations can understand, you know, where every nickel goes. Because those guys want to know, before they give us any money, they're gonna wanna know exactly. And that's why we, with everything else, our department, everything else, everything is based on last year's actual figures. We charge, we're, we're here behind on everything for, for all the stuff from the plantation. But it's the real cost. It's not a guess, and it's not a, you know, it might be this, it might be that. So they know exactly how much it costs and what they're sharing. So, anyway, this is-
Food for thought.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yes?
Um, you may want to check with the FAA, since this is a town-owned airport. I believe that if you're going to charge other towns, it would need to be a regional airport, which maybe you want to consider seeing whether or not it can be designated as a regional airport, so that it's not just the burden of ranging, but of more towns around, because benefits the whole county.
Well, I remember back in oh five, when we had, you did the work up there, and we had a discussion with the FAA, and they, they were adamant about us making as much money at, up at that airport as possible. I mean, they were adamant. You guys need to start charging for this, this, and this, and this.
That's different than asking-
I understand that. But is that, is that really true? I mean, is it a natural fact that we have, that we'll have to be a regional airport if we start charging Dallas plantations?
I say you should ask the FAA, because I, I don't know what it's-
Okay. Yeah, definitely. I mean, that would, that would change everything.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Yes, Dave's.
I, I'm not up to speed on the whole airport thing, but I used to be. And when Skidavport was, was, uh, in the, in the war, and he told me one time that, that there's two sides of the equation. He said that the airport is also a revenue generator, and excise taxes that the town gets directly, and the equipment that the feds purchase for us. And he said that, and when you, when you compare, and he said, when you compare the total, uh, spreadsheets, that, that airport actually makes the town money as opposed to costs the town money.
Yeah.
So the, I just bring this up because if you go to the plantation, they'll say, "Well, if you want us to pay in, we want a piece of the action, too."
Yeah, no, it, it, um, it, there's definitely, it, it isn't a wash. Um, you know, it doesn't pay for its own, uh, resources, uh, at this point. Um, so, yeah, but you raise a good point. You know, they're gonna wanna know what's, what the offset is. All right, so this is what you've got for, for income versus what it's costing. So it's, yeah, the in, yeah, the income point probably, you know, will need to be, you know, reviewed at some, this coming year. Anything else? All right, moving on. We've got a, um, S B A update from Darrell, um, which, you know, to piggyback on what Laura shared with us earlier, that the, uh, it's a very successful event. Thirty-six people attended, a lot of positive feedback. Um, and, uh, you know, helps that we're the host, host community, just brings more focus and attention to Ranger. Yeah.
I forgot to ask, did they ask for a follow-up?
Yes, they've got everyone's, they've got everyone's email, and they actually already sent out an email to everyone that attended, asking them to fill out a survey, and, and actually, people in the audience also suggested that they might want to hold a, um, how, uh, workshop on how to start a new business, like, how do you do the correct process? And they said they'd be willing to do that in the future.
That's great. Next, we've got, um, one thing that was requested from, um, the board at our last meeting was what balances exist in our reserve accounts. So you're gonna want to put this in your budget binder. Um, and Tim called me on Friday and said that it looked like some of, because one of the questions that was asked at our, at the budget presentation was the requested capital expenditures, were, were any of those, was all of that to be raised, or was some of it coming out of reserve funds? And he felt that he, you know, some would come out of reserve funds after seeing the balances that currently exist. So make sure you carry that over to your budget binder. And then, um, we've got a timeline for town meeting. It looks like they're needed, uh, Tricia needed to make a bit of an adjustment. So this was the February first, um, it was, yeah, the-
Law. The Nov-, yeah, the November one, that, um, kicked my butt a little bit on my timeline, and I just got it correctly pretty fast.
Okay, so nomination papers, uh, are due March second instead of the sixteenth?
They're available, so.
Yeah.
We can pick them up.
I'm sorry. Nomination available, okay. And deadline is April thirteenth instead of the twelfth. Okay, let me get it on. Okay. And with that, Tricia updated the, um, the timeline to reflect these, uh, these date adjustments. So thank you. Thank you, Tricia. And that's it under other businesses. Now, moving on to border selectmen, moral communication. Basically, I just asked, uh, this, this is a really nice article, um, that was put out February first regarding the town of Wilton and what they've been able to do with their downtown revitalization plan, and what it's done to assist current and new businesses. So this is just something, um, something I wanted to share, to share with the board as we move forward. Um, I, if you had any specific questions, I know Tim's got a good, you know, a good working relationship with, um, with the town manager there, if you had any questions that, you know, stemmed from reading this article. Anything else from the board? For once? For twice? All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll have to adjourn.
Donnie's motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim's seconds. All in favor? And that's unanimous.
This is the person I received.